Excellent. I'm going to do this in record time tonight. Okay, chairman's update. There's not much new since we met just a week ago, except that it appears that spring has finally sprung and the weather is significantly nicer than just one week ago. However, the House did pass their FY16 budget. It's a $38.1 billion budget. Includes some good news, including $34 million increase in unrestricted local aid over the FY15 budget, a $108 million increase in Chapter 70 aid. While there was an increase in regional transportation aid over the current funding levels, they're still not back up to the pre-9C cut levels. And it did also include 50% of the amount for regional bonus aid, of which the Acton Boxboro Schools is one of the few districts that qualifies. So, not perfect news, but some good improvement. And the budget is now with Senate Ways and Means and should be coming out shortly, so we'll see what they have to say. And a couple upcoming events include a workshop on Kelly's Corner this Thursday, May 7th, at 7:00 PM in this room, and a forum on Acton's housing production plan next Thursday, May 14th, also at 7:00, and also in this room. I think that's all I've got. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Just so we don't totally forget, Mike Gowen used to be on this board. Today is May the 4th. It's Star Wars Day. May the 4th be with you.[98.02][98.02](Laughter). Sorry. But it's really legitimate.
Tomorrow is Revenge of the Fifth.
Yes.
And if you're watching, Mike, this is your fault.
I said tomorrow is Revenge of the Fifth.
That's right. That is true. So, any rate, last Tuesday, I attended a meeting of all the town managers who participate in the Regional Housing Service Organization, which originally was housed by Sudbury, is now housed by Concord. And we went over their annual report, which I think was in your extra information. Our assessment for FY16 is going to be about, I think, $25,300, which is paid out of, I think, a two-year appropriation from CPC for that service. And the RHSO monitors our affordable housing projects and generally helps us out with a lot of those issues. At the next meeting, the board, because the Regional Housing Service Organization, in essence, is a creation of the participating communities, the board's going to be asked to sign an intermunicipal agreement with all the member communities at the next meeting to allow Burlington to join the RHSO. And I think that'll be a good addition and be helpful, I think, with the finances of that organization. I did meet with three members of the Economic Development Committee last Thursday, talk about the land use director, economic director position. We had a good meeting. They want to be helpful in moving that project forward, so I invited them to, in a response to the request we put out for comments on the job description for, also for our meeting on the 18th. Last week, the clerical folks in the land use divisions had some cross-training, because one of the crucial pieces of land use is for clerical to kind of be cognizant of what each department does and kind of cross-train so they can help customers. So, that occurred last week. Tomorrow is a meeting at DEP in Worcester with the stakeholders for the sewer treatment plant at Nagog that services not only the condos, but the shopping center, et cetera. As I think I reported to the board, that system has been under a consent decree. I think DEP would like to see the town take it over. There's a lot of hurdles that are involved with that. It's our understanding that the condo association of Nagog Woods is also interested in taking it over. So, there's a meeting tomorrow in Worcester to discuss that. Doug Howey will be there representing the town. It could be in the future, we will maybe need to discuss this, probably be ground to executive session since it's real estate. Finally, we had our first session with, a negotiation session with the Teamsters Union last week. They represent the dispatchers and public safety. And we have our first session with the Patrol Police Patrol Union tomorrow morning as well. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. We are a little before our first public hearing, so why don't we do the consent agenda? I'll read through this, and if you want to hold anything, just say "hold." Number four, Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Paul Nelson, May 31st. That's you, Peter. Is that?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Tucker Drew Penny, May 25th, but we're switching that to Franny?
Yes, and I think there's an E in Penny.
Well, we'll just check the citation, make sure that's fine. Number six, One Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Congregation Bethel Hume, May 17th, 2015. Number seven, One Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Peter Daniel, Nara Park, May 17th, Number eight, One Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Acton Boxboro Youth Baseball, Nara Park, May 28th, 2015. Number nine, Accept Gift Recreation Department, $2,000 from Sorrento's Brook Oven Pizza, $2,000 to support the 2015 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. Number 10, Accept Gift Recreation Department, Art Signals Studio and Video Signals, $100 to help support 2015 Summer Concert Series. Number 11, Accept Gift Recreation Department, AAA Northeast, $100 to help support the 2015 Summer Concert Series. Number 12, Accept Gift Recreation Department, Middlesex Savings Bank, $250 to help support the 2015 Summer Concert Series. Number 13, Accept Gift Recreation Department, Workers Credit Union, $500 to support the 2015 Summer Concert Series. And number 14, Request Disposal of Obsolete Materials, Acton Memorial Library. Okay, I think nothing was held, so if I could get a motion on accepting the consent agenda?
Move that we accept the consent agenda from items four through 14.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes you wanted us, wasn't there a January 12th?
January 12th.
Okay, so why don't we, it's not on here, but let's just do, except meeting minutes from January 12th, 2015. If I could get a motion for that, please.
I move that we approve the minutes from January 12th, 2015.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
All right. It's 7:10, because it's pretty darn close to it. All right, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 4th, 2015, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall on the application of National Grid for an installation and maintenance of approximately 135 feet, more or less of two-inch gas main, Woodchester Drive, from the existing two-inch gas main at House Number Five, Easterly, to House Number Three for a new gas service. The application and company plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there somebody from National Grid here? Would you mind coming up to the microphone and just hit the button to turn it on?
My name is Barbara Kelleher, and I'm representing Dennis Regan tonight.
Does anybody have any questions about the request?
Yeah, the only thing I would note is, I don't know if you've seen this memo, it's to us. The DPW is asking that, let's see, National Grid, contact them before you begin to work, because they're going to have some drainage work that's going on out there, and they want to coordinate that with your work.
I believe that that always goes on. There's always a meeting between the town.
Okay.
Department.
There's a plan attached to the memo we got from the town showing their drainage work, so just note that and assume that's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, can we have a motion?
Move to approve the petition from National Grid to install 134.
Oh, oh, sorry, questions from the audience. Yes, I'm sorry. Normally, we don't have it. That's okay. Would you like to come, yeah, we need you to come up to the microphone to speak.
I address the questions directly to you.
Um...
How do you want to do that?
Should address them to the board, but that we could ask or respond. But I do need you to come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
I have a couple of questions. First, I want to know...
Sorry, can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm Barry Rosen. I'll give you all the list of questions. First, why is National Grid doing this? Second is, from where does the Woodchester feed emanate? You know, what's the origin of the feed? Of what material is the pipe? Is it going to be ferrous or non-ferrous material? There's some big problems in that whole area, the current material, which has caused, I can't remember the exact number, but in the teens of water main breaks. All right, the Water District is repairing, and it's costing people a lot of money up there. I can explain the technical reason why, but we don't want to go into that now. Are they going to use directional drilling? And what's the plan if they hit a ledge? Woodchester Drive, the whole area is full of ledge. That is why the streets are out of spec, and they don't meet the town standards for elevation. They are well above town standards because ledge was struck by everybody, well, originally Kevin Sweeney, when he built the roads, he hit ledge, and he blasted and blasted, and it was tremendous amount of blasting to overcome the ledge. That'll do it for now.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question here? Is this part of the Squirrel Drive neighborhood up there?
It is. Yeah, yeah. It's a completely vulnerable area.
Right.
It's essentially Kevin Sweeney and his successive company.
Right.
Okay, Barbara, would you mind addressing any of those that you can?
The reason for the job is to provide gas service to Number Three, Woodchester Drive. I can't say, you know, as an expert. It usually is direct burial. It is two-inch. That's a small trench. It is 133 feet, which is not long enough in our business, I hate to say. But I know that, and we try to provide minimal distraction. I forget the others. I can't.
Yeah, you just have to go up, you guys have to share the mic. I'm sorry. Because you're on TV, so you have to speak into the mic.
I wrote down the questions because I'm compulsive. Okay, why are you doing this?
Provide service.
Where does the Woodchester feed originate?
I don't have a big enough locus to answer that.
Okay, you don't know. What material is being used, ferrous or not?
I would say that, I don't, not an expert.
Okay, just, okay. Are you using directional drilling?
I would say direct burial, but I could...
And what happens if you hit ledge? There's lots of ledge.
There would probably be a bit of, they would, not blast through, that they use the pounder on the digger. That's from my past experiences. That's what they would do. They would...
I thought those were going to be the answers.
Yes.
Okay, so do you have any further questions or comments, Mr. Rosen?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
I would ask the town to defer action on this, because there are serious consequences to some of these things, particularly if it's ferrous material. If you want to, I can explain the chemistry, but you probably don't want to hear that. But trust me, I serve on multiple committees. One of the committees is the Water District. And because of this, and it's been by independent contractors who brought in to check it, because of the material, and they had electrified the pipes to keep their pipes from corroding, it essentially caused the water pipes to all become pitted in the area. And if you drive it through that area, you'll see all these patched holes in the teens caused by what they're trying to do to prevent, to protect the gas pipes. So, I want to make sure that, one, they're not ferrous pipes that will need protection again, and, second, they will not electrify the pipes as they did. They have since disconnected after there were some, let's call them discussions, between the Water District and National Grid. And if they're going to have to use pounding or drilling, the people need to be notified that, because there are serious consequences now that it's a built-up neighborhood. You can cause substantial damage to homes in the area. So, I'd ask, until we have the answers, I would request that the board defer action.
Okay, are there any questions from the board?
I don't hear a sound. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, Barry, I think it would be helpful, you're actually on the Land and Water Management Subcommittee Advisory Committee of the Water District. The Water District has three commissioners, and I don't know if you have any idea whether they wish to opine about this, but I think it would be helpful if the Water District, or at least the district manager, has an opinion if we were to get that, some sort of confirmation, one way or the other, about...
I just sent first of email.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful. I understand that you're fairly knowledgeable, but I think for our purposes, we need to have an official body that is weighing in on it. And if it's, if the concern is with the potential impact on the water pipes in the area, then, you know, that's one of your concerns. The other concern, I gather, is the, is about the effect of the pounding generally on the neighborhood. And, you know, we obviously can require, require that there be some consideration of that, but I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, he's raised some issues, and I honestly, I think that it would be helpful if perhaps National Grid, given that there's not some answers to the questions, and there is some concern about the water impact on water pipes, if you could have a little conversation and answer the question so that then you can proceed smoothly without having any kind of concerns.
I should tell you, I did try to get this, to avoid that, I did try to get the answers from National Grid, from their new gas, their group that deals with new gas hookups. And without going into it in a lot of detail, I couldn't get many of the answers. They actually referred me to you, as you know how the company's organized. They said, "Oh, yeah, she'll have all the answers, don't worry." And I said, "I don't think so. I think you probably need to speak to your engineers." "Oh, well, we don't do that." And I said, "Why are you, why are you building the pipe?" She had no idea why they were even building the pipe. And I said, "Are you aware that there are other people in the neighborhood that probably want to switch to natural gas if they're available? And if they would putting a pipe in, they might as well come all the way down and join the pipe that's on Windermere Drive, and that way there's backup." She didn't know how to answer that either.
Which it will. If it is.
But Barry, as, Barry, as I was saying, I think that it would be useful if National Grid could have a conversation with at least the district manager, if, if the commissioners aren't meeting, to sort of expedite getting, getting the answer to the questions. That's my suggestion anyhow.
Yeah, I did have time to present to the, their meeting now. So, I have to go back to...
Peter, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to basically say the same thing. I think we ought to continue it for a couple of weeks. They sound like reasonable questions.
Yeah, they do.
If you people could exchange...
Absolutely.
...your contact information and...
That's okay. I see, I see to it that someone...
I would like to see written on the license itself that they'll meet with the town before they begin work. I understand you say that happens, but it would be nice to see it written down and make sure that happens, so, okay. And we can, we could talk about continuing for two weeks, I think, so I'm assuming that...
Ching Sun?
Hi.
Oh, okay, sorry. No, okay. Yeah, I mean, I agree, as long as, I think, we have an action plan about what's going to happen next, so that we're not just continuing, continuing. So, if you guys exchange information and you, yeah, go over to the Water District meeting, and if you could just get back to us in time for probably our May 18th meeting, and we can hopefully put it on the agenda again and have some answers, you know, by, by then, that would be preferable, so. Excellent. Okay, so, do we have to move to continue? Yeah.
We move to continue the hearing to May 18th?
Second.
Have a specific time?
I actually have to move here to the...
Okay. Yeah. Okay. We'll let Lisa run now. We'll get you a specific time for when you can come back on the 18th.
Is it possible to just continue it?
Yeah, you got to set, for a public hearing, you got to set a specific time.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. We'll just take a short pause.
Okay, move to continue that hearing to our next meeting, May 18th, at 7:35 PM.
Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye." Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, excellent. All right. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 4th, 2015, at 7:15 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall on the application of Swanson Buick GMC Truck, Inc., for an amendment with their Class 1 Dealer's License at Sudbury Road, Lot 1, Acton Mass. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there anyone here from Swanson Buick? Well, that's unfortunate. I mean, I don't know if people are comfortable moving ahead without the applicant here. Usually, somebody...
It sounds like it's just to correct a situation, you know, that, yeah, and it sounds like the proposed solution takes care of the problem, so.
It does sound like that, but I would still like to have the applicant here so that we have an opportunity to speak with the applicant if necessary.
Other people, concerns, whether they'd want the applicant here or comfortable just doing the change?
Yeah, I, I, I know where Swanson Buick is. Are they just parking on their own parking lot, or was this across the street on Leo's property?
They need some work with the Conservation Commission to never complete before the board for a final...
Okay. They expanded their lot, okay.
They changed the entrance, so it was a little bit less issue, but it still needs to be updated in their files. That's all there is, is an amendment to their...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I agree, I'm still uncomfortable issuing something without the applicant here, but you need to look at the Certificate of Liability Insurance, which I've got in my package as the third page here. I don't know if you have it, Lisa. This is supposed to be something that allows the town of Acton to be notified if the insurance is ever canceled for any reason. This is for workers' comp. And they have, as a certificate holder at the bottom, Swanson Pontiac Buick. That should actually be the town of Acton that should be notified if the policy gets canceled for any reason. So, they need to fix that.
Okay, well, why don't we hopefully fix that and then defer this also to the 18th? Is there a good time on the 18th that we could do it?
Move to continue this hearing to our next meeting, Monday, May 18th, at 7:45 PM.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Yeah, and maybe Lisa just say in the email, "We really want them present." Might not have gotten that message, I don't know. Okay, and then our last thing, really, is the Design Review Board discussion of proposed revisions to charge. So, Janet, I'll turn that over to you to give a little history.
This, yeah, I will explain, as I was explaining to Ching Sun what the documents are. Document one is the currently effective charge, which was a revision, reflects a revision in 2014. Document two is the proposed new charge incorporating changes that are the result of my conferring with planning, the Planning Department repeatedly, as well as getting feedback from the Acton Community Housing Corporation, or Nancy Tavernier, and also from the Design Review Board itself. And document three is the redlined copy showing the changes from 2014 to 2015. I think that when we first, when I initially came on the board, I think that the Design Review Board was a fairly new board. I think that there was also some tension between the Board of Selectmen and the Design Review Board about, because of, I think, the membership of the Design Review Board in the sense that maybe there was some sort of an agenda. And since that time, there has been a substantial turnover in the membership, and Holly Ben Joseph has been the chairman for a good part of that time, and she has been, she's very, very effective, very well organized, and has, they have actually done some very good work commenting on different projects. When they first started out, started out, the charge provided that they could weigh in on design issues related to commercial site plans, which were under the Board of Selectmen's purview. It was a much more conservative scope of authority, and the idea was that they're advisory to the Board of Selectmen so we could control them a little bit better. The amendment in 2014, which actually should have occurred earlier, but there was some miscommunication, was basically to expand their authority to include multifamily housing of four units of more. It got translated into developments of four units of more, which was regarded as separate housing, when actually, the original idea was to have multifamily housing units. And in the meantime, because time has passed, this whole revision process started in 2014. It was really the DRB's initiative, because they were feeling with all the Acton 2020 activities going on, and their increasing effectiveness and weighing in on different projects, that perhaps it was time to overhaul the charge to better reflect what they were capable of doing and also what they were doing. And originally, the idea was that the Board of Selectmen and then the Planning Board, different boards that are involved in permitting, could invite the DRB to weigh in. What has happened is, I mean, the Planning Department and then the ZBA sends out their notices to everyone under the sun, so, and including the DRB, so they would weigh in on some of those projects. And it got to be so that the charge really didn't reflect what they were doing, and it also didn't reflect perhaps some of the things that they ought to be doing, such as providing general design guidance to departments, to individuals in town that would like to have it, to, on preliminary projects that aren't yet coming before permitting boards. And so, I conferred with the Planning Department, the Town Planner and the Assistant Town Planner a number of times about what they saw happening. The DRB has weighed in as well. One of the things that I learned from planning was that, for example, DRB was interested in weighing in on subdivisions, and perhaps that's because they didn't really understand that subdivisions, the purview of Planning Board with regard to subdivisions is really very, very limited. It's basically the lot layout, and you don't get to talk about architectural elevations at all. So, the purview for the DRB would be as limited as the Planning Board's. And so, that is sort of incorporated in the beginning. There's sort of, it's saying that, the first part, it's talking about, it should be, I've got to look at my, my revisions, but basically, it's incorporating the idea that they have to abide by the respective jurisdictional authority of the permit granting authority. So, first of all, they still will weigh in on commercial site plans and things that are under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. They also will have the opportunity to weigh in on Planning Board projects, to the extent that, you know, the Planning Board wants them to weigh in, and to the extent that the Planning Board has any authority to weigh in on, on these projects. And then, at the request of, ACHC has started to invite them to attend meetings for very preliminary proposals, to hear proposals for, very early on, about potential housing projects, affordable housing projects. And that is not technically part of their current charge, but that's voluntary on the part of Nancy Tavernier, because the DRB actually provided some very helpful comments to one set of proponents for one of the housing projects, and the proponents just saying the praises of the DRB as a result, because they got some very useful guidance that they actually adopted in large part. So, the Zoning Board of Appeals will listen to anybody. It's not really necessarily the case that they'll adopt the changes, but these are all recommendations. It's basically, it's the same with the Board of Selectmen. We can invite the DRB to weigh in, but at the end of the day, the decision is up to us, and we don't have to accept recommendations of any, anybody, including the departments, although typically, we do, because... recommendations of any, anybody, including the departments, although typically, we do, because, I mean, we run the risk of making very bad decisions if we ignore our engineering department, our fire and police chiefs, and, you know, the health department, and that sort of thing. But, yeah, the charge has been expanded, I mean, there are some components that they're saying, such as membership, but another element that I incorporated was the idea of, if people want to get some guidance from the DRB, they can ask for it, project proponents typically are developers. DRB doesn't necessarily, if they don't have time or something, they don't have to agree to do it, but if they do agree to provide some guidance, then they would have to, they would abide by these guidelines. I think that if the more preliminary the project is, the stages is for the project, then the more conceptual the materials they submit can be. And so, that's, they have a procedure, we tried to clean up some of the procedure, and that was really my aim, was to try to address a number of deficiencies in the existing charge, because it really didn't reflect either what they were starting to do that I thought that they should continue, that seemed they should continue to do, and it also didn't kind of encompass the idea of sort of general guidance, because they have, they have professional architects, Holly is a professional landscape architect, they have an engineer who formerly was on Planning Board, and so they have a good mix currently of professionals who are willing to do the work, and I think it's one of these things where I want to keep them engaged and interested, because the more they get to be involved, the more likely it is that they'll stay on board, and they're pretty, they're a pretty strong crew right now, so I would like, you know, to support them, because otherwise, they'll lose interest and move on, and I do happen to think that having some sort of design guidance component is important, so.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members, Peter?
Yeah, I think one thing that happened that they were upset about was the redesign of Roach Brothers Mall, which I don't think required a site plan review, so I'm assuming if the Planning Department heard about that, and if they have to review some plans or something, and they could, that's, is that a new addition, the Planning Department referring?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was actually the suggestion of the Planning Department people, I think Roland and, well, it was Kristen, well, and also I think Scott was in some of the meetings, but I think Roland is on board with the idea of getting them involved, and one of the things that I mentioned in my Selectmen's reports was, as a result of this meeting that we had about the TRB project, whenever it was last week, there's a proposal, and you know this because you're dealing with the Kelly's Corner people, that, there's a proposal that the zoning bylaws, or whatever, the purview of the Planning Board be changed to mandate that they be involved in all Kelly's Corner development proposals, commercial or housing or otherwise, which would be a change, because that would mean that the Board of Selectmen wouldn't have that, but that doesn't, that doesn't alter the Selectmen's responsibility with regard to commercial developments in other areas, but I think that, the idea is that, well, they, I think that they need to have more work, they can't just be working on subdivisions, because there aren't that many of them, and it makes sense to have a more, more sort of coherent, just approach to it, so, but...
Yeah, actually, I, just on a kind of, on a tangential issue, as I mentioned in my Selectmen's report, I talked to the Planning Board about transferring all responsibility for site plan, special permit review to the Planning Board, that obviously would require a process, but we should, I'm gonna recommend at a future meeting that we put together a committee to study how other towns do it, why it's done this way, particularly in this town, and what the impact of transferring that to the Planning Board would be from the Selectmen, Roland, I sent an email around where Roland was expressing those concerns about the split between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, and how that affects the Planning Board, membership, and their work, so hopefully we'll be moving forward on that. The Kelly's Corner people have their own design review, I actually haven't looked on the website, has the DRB published design review guidelines?
They did, I think they're out, they haven't updated them lately, and there's, there are references in here, I mean, obviously, you can tell I'm the liaison to the Acton Community Housing Corporation, because I have a lot of references to affordable housing standards that exist, I mean, they're pretty exhaustive design standards that exist at the state level, and they were actually, I think, developed by, they might have been developed by the Cecil Group, or for the state, anyhow, under a consulting arrangement. But one of the things that I wanted to mention as well is knowing that there's likely to be a change, some sort of change in the zoning bylaw, and perhaps in the responsibilities of the Planning Board, I still, it may be that it's gonna require another change in this charge, but, you know, we've been working on it for two, a year and a half, and I would just like to have something that's in place that better reflects what the DRB has been doing, and just sort of set them on the course, especially because 2020 is working on what they're working on, give them sort of opportunities to weigh in on other things, other than just permitting projects, because I think they, they're already involved in the 2020 stuff, some of the members, I think, so.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we hold this up, I think it sounds great, I mean, I think the revisions are appropriate, and the change to the Planning Board requires a change in the zoning bylaw, that's where it is, that the Selectmen now do site plan special permits. They also talked about a change in the makeup of the Planning Board, which require a charter change, so we'll be looking at all that stuff, but I don't see any language in here that would necessarily have to be changed, even if that change took place. If the Cecil Group design guidelines for Kelly Corner are adopted, this adequately covers that by talking about, you know, the 2020 plan, and I'm assuming the DRB would just use the Cecil Group, you know, design guidelines as part of their review of any future Kelly's Corner development, so I like the changes.
Okay, Franny?
Yeah, having been on a committee, Transportation Advisory Committee, that felt like our suggestions were not really being heard, I really respect the DRB getting this down, and I think it's a great idea. I wondered if there should be somebody in just art, or fine arts, I mean, there's an interior design, I mean, I know that they don't have members from all these fields, but I was just thinking it would be, someone, just a plain old artist, would probably bring a good aesthetic to the view of things, but I think it's a really good change.
I'll mention that to the DRB, see what they think. But, well, you know, we could sort of finesse it, say, well, you know, graphic design, you know, art, whatever, artist.
So they come, okay, they, they come, they don't come earlier, but I always feel that they should be involved as early as possible, and maybe have proactive meetings with developers before they go to the drawing board.
They would like that, I think, yeah, they would like that, and that's one of the issues, is to take the shackles off them a little bit, because they've been around for long enough now, and I think that they have, to some extent, they've proven their value over the past, well, certainly since I've been on the board, and so I think, yeah, to give them a little more leeway, so that they feel comfortable about, you know, weighing in on some things that are not just, you know, projects before the Board of Selectmen, or don't just involve the Planning Department, talking about projects that are going to the Board of Selectmen, a little more flexibility, so, yeah.
And I, one more comment, I remember talking to the people who are developing Post Office Square, and I asked them if they knew about Acton 2020, and they didn't, and I was, and they said, "Oh, but we're making it fit in with what Acton likes." And I said, "How do you know that what Acton likes?" And they said, "They just look around, and they see what's here." So it was, it was, I feel like the DRB getting in early can help guide.
I just had two small comments with regard to the language. The first was in the Design Review Guidelines section, under the bullet points, I was wondering if you wanted to include a catch-all bullet point that just says, you know, something like, "Any other projects which might fall under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board of Appeals," just, just to cover, you know, anything, any weird stuff that might come up. And then the second is in Project Procedure Review, oftentimes for bullet points like number one, I see something like, "The review package should include but not be limited to," followed by a list of bullet points.
So you emailed me your comments, or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, okay.
It's just the two small changes, an addition of a bullet point, and a small change that...
Because it'd be easier for me to see them, you know, it's, yeah, picture's worth a thousand words.
Sure, of course, I can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just want to say thank you to Janet, and to the DRB, and you've been working on this, like you said, for quite, quite a while, and I know it's been a lot of work to sort of get everybody on board and agree to these changes to their charge, and, you know, I think you're right, that it's important for us to recognize the value of the DRB, and to really make sure we're reflecting the work that they're actually doing. They've been extremely helpful with a number of projects that have come before us, and I value their input, and I think if you look at the projects that they've had, sort of that earlier, and fruitful dialogue with the developer, I think those often end up being better projects than one where either the developer wants to close his or her ears, or where, you know, the kind of advice comes too late, and so I think it's great that you have in here that note about, you know, at the request of the Planning Department for projects that are pending, or that are in the pre-application stage, because I think that covers a lot of these, you know, like the TRB ones, that are not quite applicants yet, but we know they're coming, they know what they're doing, and, you know, they've been around the block before, so they know that we're gonna listen to the DRB, and it's worth them going to it, but for a new developer who might not know about the DRB, if they don't know about 2020, they might not know about the DRB, or, you know, to kind of ask about that, so I think it's good to have that language in there. So I just want to say thank you for that work. Do you want us to, was this just a discussion on it? I mean, it's really their charge, is it our charge?
Well, it's, no, but it's, we're the ones who have to authorize them what they do.
But so, do you want to make those final changes before we vote anything, or do you want to vote tonight?
I think, well, if, the only changes I've really heard are from Ching Sung, and I, you know, maybe approving it with, subject to the changes that Ching Sung has mentioned, then we can move on, and I can think about something else.
Exactly right, they have the signs, you can do the temporary sign.
No, you, no, yeah, that, and then, oh, you know, the Acton Selectmen's Handbook, which basically I deep six, it was, I think it was probably pending when you stepped down, and I stepped up, and I looked at it, and I thought, no, it's like 60 pages long, there's no way you're gonna do this, but I didn't know enough to edit it down to sort of anyhow, so that's sort of up there, another project, another fun drafting project.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept pending minor changes?
Move to accept the Design Review change, charter, change to the Charter of the Design Review Board pending proposed changes.
Second.
A little weird sound, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I realized, I forgot, there was an addition to the consent agenda to appoint Kat Hudson as an associate member to, was it to 2020, or to the?
Kelly's Corner Steering Committee.
Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, thank you, trying to find that on here. So can I have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, and then, the reports were in, the reports that were sent in were in the packet, I think some of us might not have had any, so if there are any questions, or is there anything that people wanted to comment on specifically and highlight in their report?
There was hardly a report this week. I like this new approach.
Right? See if that was, it'll be a little longer to do next time. Okay, excellent, I think that is everything, so if we could get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right.